Oops. The bird clock says we got another minute.
Still not used to daylight savings or doesn't it block you, right?
Yeah. Thought I had it set right. Alright, so I'm reading confirming member access first, right?
It's like a morning dove.
Yep. Okay, this meeting is called to order. This is the March fourteenth meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. Tonight, we are holding our meeting remotely because of the weather. So we have to do some preliminary matters that we don't usually do. So I'm going to read the script as a preliminary matter. This is Morris DiPaolo, Chair of the Select Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Beth Cassavan?
Present.
Rita Flynn?
Present.
John Samia?
Present.
Michelle Conlon?
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar? Taylor Galusha?
Present.
David Snowden?
Present.
Okay, anticipated speakers. We don't have any speakers this evening, correct? Okay. Okay. Good evening. This open meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's order of, sorry, got the wrong date, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, due to the current state of emergency. Sorry. Suspending the certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC thirty A, Section eighteen. The order, which you can find posted on the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Google Meet. Sorry, I haven't done this for a while. As posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Okay, now I have another thing to read. Google Meet information to join by phone, dial one seven four seven two four eight seven three five four, pin number one five three nine nine one nine, uh, four nine zero pound sign. Okay. Important notice pursuant to Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-two Senate Bill three zero zero seven, signed into law by the Governor on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL, Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen, this meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed on the agenda will be done so through remote participation. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and our requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at shrewsbury ma dot gov dot coronavirus. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To listen to this meeting, dial one seven four seven two four eight seven three five four and enter the following PIN, one five three nine nine one nine, uh, four nine zero pound sign. Please mute your device by pressing star six. Okay, I believe that's it, correct? Okay. So now we'll move on to our agenda. Also, all our votes tonight will have to be done by roll call vote. So first item of business is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants. But I have a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo, aye. Okay, next item is to review and act or approve the minutes of the February twenty-seventh and February twenty-eighth meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo, aye. There any announcements this evening? I don't, I don't have any. Next item of business is the town managers' report. Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything this evening?
I did one announcement. Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. I wanted to share with the board that last week, we learned that the Assabet School Committee voted to not consider the expansion of its district to any other communities. As the board knows, Dr. Sawyer had requested the Shrewsbury officials have a chance to have a discussion with the school committee prior to end decision being made, but the Assabet School Committee determined that based on wanting to preserve as many seats as possible for their own communities, that they did not want to take on any other communities at this time. Apparently, Shrewsbury wasn't the only community. We've learned that also Boxboro and Sudbury had made inquiries about possibly joining the Assabet District. Of course, board members, you know, this is related to the vocational technical offerings and the changes in the state law that gives preference to formal sending district communities. Essentially, what this did at the beginning of the school year was eliminate the possibility for any of Shrewsbury students, new students, to continue vocation or start vocational education during their high school years, since we're not a formal member of any vocational technical high schools. So on average, there's about a hundred and thirty students a year, grades nine through twelve, who have traditionally participated in some type of vocational educational offerings. The vast majority have all gone to Assabet Valley. But again, this no longer seems to be any possibility under the state law and now with the position that their school committee has taken with not entertaining any new communities into their districts. So this does present a problem. I would see it, obviously, first and foremost, challenging our ability to provide appropriate education to all students in grades nine through twelve. As we know, many students thrive in the vocational technical setting more than they do in the academic setting. And this likely will also challenge, especially as we get more years into the future. The overcrowding issue that we have at the Shrewsbury High School, if we add another hundred and thirty students into an overcrowded school because they don't have any other opportunities, certainly going to contribute to that. So that's what we know at this time. We'd have to look to pursue other options and work with our state legislative delegation and other matters, but I did want to inform the board that it doesn't seem that Assabet Valley will be a possibility for Shrewsbury students at any time in the future.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay. Mr. Mizikar, anything else?
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a public comment. Nobody signed up for public comment for this meeting, so we won't be having any public comments this evening. Next item of business is to review and act on the cable television franchise renewal agreement with Shrewsbury Cable Operations Selco. Mr. Mizikar? That agreement is ready for our vote and signature. The highlights of it is it's only a five-year agreement this year. And it's essentially the same monetary amount for us, but it's just broken up differently, allocated among different accounts, but it's the same amount of money. Is that basically it?
Yeah, that's correct. The franchise license agreement will provide five percent of subscriber revenue to the town, which with declining subscribers, we estimate to be in the mid four hundred thousand range for fiscal year twenty-three. Likely see a continued decline. The only reason it'll be similar to the prior year is because it's increased from four and a quarter to five percent. But in total, we've worked in partnership with Selco and the Selco Commission to maintain funding from all Selco sources to be level year over year, and then we've worked with them in other matters for inflationary measures for fuel and other kind of administrative functions that we perform on their behalf. So this agreement in and of itself is what was heard in two of your prior meetings, both general presentation that was received in January and then a public hearing at your last meeting on February twenty-eighth. So the board would enter into cable franchise renewal agreement in Selco and send a letter to the state notifying them that we have done so.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I have one.
Sure.
Just, I know that there was, there were questions about Shrewsbury Media Connection and making sure that they were going to have the resources that they needed in order to still provide a service to the community that we all very much depend on. And I'm thinking of this meeting, that wouldn't be possible right now if we didn't have Shrewsbury Media Connection to get us all on here and broadcast. I'm just, I think when I read through it, I see that they will have the necessary funds to operate. I was just wondering if you could confirm that, Mr. Mizikar?
They certainly will in the short run. By the end of the five-year agreement, that's a big question mark. You know, Selco is transitioning away from cable operations and to be competitive in the marketplace, moving more to an internet-based service using an app and things like that, and we would expect to continue to see a decline in traditional cable subscribers. And actually, at the end of this five-year agreement, the cable system will no longer be serviceable. So we will have to look for alternatives in the future to provide funding for Shrewsbury Media Connection. You will recall, we provided a small contribution in the twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three budget, the current year, with revised funding model that won't necessarily be that won't be necessary in fiscal year twenty-four, but in future years, that may be required again.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Samia?
If I may, thank you. My dog's coming in, sorry if he's got sparking. The Shrewsbury Media Connection, just as a reminder too, that there were some provisions in here that changed because it's part of the last agreement. There was a contemplation of assets being transferred over to Shrewsbury Media Connection, so they were. Part of this new agreement, part of this agreement contemplates capital expenditures on an annual basis, and as part of a few years ago, they also established being a five oh one C three. So part of that also was the possibility of raising resources as well as a tax-exempt organization. They do have, I believe, a decently healthy balance sheet at this standpoint, but as time goes on, as Mrs. Cassavan has asked, and correctly so about longer term, what their financials will be. So maybe we could have a meeting in the future with the Shrewsbury Media Connection to talk to them about what they see their challenges are over the next few years. I know that they have annually reviewed financials and as well as a plan, so that may be helpful for us as well to get our arms around now rather than five years from now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then would someone like to make, to make a motion to approve and sign the cable agreement, the cable franchise agreement?
Yes, I will. I make a motion that we approve the cable franchise agreement renewal with Shrewsbury Electric Cable Operations.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
This is Apollo, aye. Okay, thank you. Next order of business is to review and discuss the draft May fifteenth annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Mizikar, would you like to take us through that?
I would. Ms. Galusha, would you be able to share the document for everyone? So I can begin with a very broad overview. Taylor puts that up. So there, in total, as proposed at this time, and again, this is just a draft warrant that includes some items that may not remain for the final warrant. That's part of the discussion this evening. There are currently fifty-five articles. That's higher than our traditional number, which has been in the mid forties, at least over the past five to seven years. The biggest driver change is the introduction of potentially nine different Community Preservation Act-funded articles. There's been a lot of work done by CPC over the course of the year to get their system and application process stood up and allows them to make recommendations for the funding of particular projects within the parameters of the Community Preservation Act. So again, in total, fifty-five articles, and I'll just begin to review them. Happy to stop and provide any details that the board members would like, but you would just have to unmute yourself and work through the chair as I can't see if you put your hand up. So Article one is a traditional article to receive reports of town officers. Article two would be to establish a fund, as were within the five-year period that would raise or be used to hold funding for the three-hundredth anniversary celebration of the incorporation of the town of Shrewsbury. Article three is a traditional article to appoint members of the Wrighton Harlow Trust. Article four is a article that comes with the recommendation of Principal Assessor Ruth Anderson and Representative Hannah Kane, which would be seeking special legislation to grant property tax exemption for the domicile of Eva Roy, who is the daughter of Worcester firefighter Christopher Roy, who lost his life while battling the fire for the city of Worcester. Firefighter Roy and Eva have been residents of the town of Shrewsbury or were residents of the town of Shrewsbury with firefighter Roy's death. She now lives with her grandparents in Shrewsbury. And because of some intricacies in the general laws that quite frankly don't make a lot of sense, since Eva is not old enough to own property in her own name, the domicile that she lives in is not receiving any benefit, and this special legislation would provide benefit for Eva's domicile if she lives within the town of Shrewsbury until the age of twenty-six, which is customary and has been done in previous instances, including other benefits that were provided to her for her father's service through the city of Worcester. The fifth article is proposed as a prior year bill, which we do have one invoice that came in after July first, and we must and we weren't aware of it until after the special town meeting in the fall that we'll have to deal with for a payment under a contracted services that we have for benefits administration. Article six would be to adjust anything in the current year budget. Article seven would be to place funding into the override stabilization account. At this point, board members, that contribution would be at least a million dollars as the budget shakes out right now. Article eight would be the fiscal year twenty-four operating budget. The budget will start July one. We'd receive funds in Articles nine, ten, and eleven through traditional sources to offset the tax rate. Article twelve, traditional article to fund disability benefits related to disabled police and firefighters. Placing funding into our insurance trust account, which we use to cover deductible expenses associated with various insurance claims. Funding a general, placing funds into the general stabilization account, sewer stabilization account, water stabilization account. Set spending limits for our revolving accounts, which is required annually through statute. Receiving chapter ninety, local transportation aid, which we use to fund street repairs and improvements. Transferring funds for the sale of cemetery lots. Funding source, providing funding for water quality of lakes and ponds throughout the community, including Lake Quinn-Sigmond. Funding Youth and Family Services activities through Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. The following four articles include the operating budgets for the Solid Waste Enterprise, Sewer Special Revenue Fund, Water Enterprise, Stormwater Enterprise, and the Cable Access Enterprise that we have set up to receive those funds through the cable franchise agreement. Following three articles would be funding of the General Capital Improvement Plan, Sewer Capital Improvement Plan, and Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan. Article thirty-three on this list is to fund the Water Capital Improvement Plan, and it's a little bit different this year, as we've shared with the board in workshop environment, and we'll continue to discuss with you through the town meeting process. Given the challenges of increased costs and the growing complexity of our water system, we are working on the next, the establishment of the next water rate, and during that process, because of those capital costs, we no longer believe it's feasible to be able to adjust the water rate enough in a single year to be able to cover on a cash basis those capital investments that are required to maintain the system. So we're proposing a different approach that's used traditionally by local governments, state governments, and federal government, which would be a bond authorization or a borrowing authorization to place, to receive the ability to fund our capital improvements for the water system using bonds. And what this will allow us to do most specifically, if we compared the amount of money that we would need to raise through the water rate on a cash basis, we'd have to adjust the rate upwards of roughly forty percent over current rates next year. If we take this borrowing approach, we would be able to stabilize the water rate, increase it on average between three and a half and five and a five percent on an annual basis as we take on projects. And those increases would be sufficient to cover the debt service associated with the improvement. So again, as the system gets bigger and costs increase, cities and towns across the country and across the Commonwealth have had to switch from a cash funding basis to a debt service basis, and that's the transition that we would be proposing through Article thirty at the annual town meeting. Article thirty-one would be to appropriate additional funding for the Oak Middle School Window Project. This project was originally authorized in the fall. We've done more due diligence and received additional quotes. Unfortunately, what was originally estimated to be about a one million dollar project has come in just shy of four million. We had proposed the use of funds that we have already borrowed but didn't need because of the great performance of the development of the new Beal School at Lake Street. So we have funds that we didn't expend, so we would transfer those over for the cash portion that's required for this. But of course, on all MSBA projects, MSBA would be providing fifty-two percent of the funding for this, but the town is required to demonstrate that we have the entire appropriation. Rather than tie up all the cash associated with this project, we would seek a borrowing authorization for the funds, ultimately that the state will be covering. So we'll need to add about another one point three million dollars from those funds to the five hundred thousand dollars that was put in place at a prior town meeting. Article thirty-two is to fund the expansion of the cemetery Prospect Street. This has been discussed many times, and we've received funding to do the expansion. And it's been worked through both Department of Public Work Staff and the Parks and Cemetery Commission. We will have a preliminary design and cost estimate for town meeting to consider during finance committee hearings and other aspects and including town meeting. We would propose the use of some cash that we have on hand. Board members, I'm actually changed my thought a little bit recently on this, and I believe it would be best to use those funds that we have borrowed but unexpended that would still remain from Beal even after the prior transfer that we do for the prior project. That puts us in the best position to use cash to not have to incur debts, since we have those funds available to us. We'll save taxpayers a significant amount of money in the long run, and then we would seek a borrowing authorization, which at this time I would estimate to have about one point five million dollars in cash contributions and seek a borrowing authorization of three and a half million dollars. Neither of these borrowing authorizations or the prior three borrowing authorizations that I mentioned, none of them would be debt exclusions. So this would just require a town meeting, and then we'd use sources available to us, whether it's the water rates or taxation as required for the cemetery project to fund these costs. So it wouldn't be a direct impact and increase in taxation because of these projects. Article thirty-three is a Select Board initiative, given the feedback that we've received from the public and the investments that have been made into the property that is outside of the area that would be developed for the cemetery would be the designation of the balance of the portion of Prospect Park for park purposes. So with that designation in perpetuity, the use of the Prospect Park area beyond the fifty-year design plan that we've developed, which is roughly a little bit shy, a half of the sixty-two acres that are available would be perpetually dedicated for park purposes. There's, of course, a portion of that land that's already dedicated for water purposes, and we'd always retain the right to expand roadways and sidewalks as needed, but the key part of this would be keeping the park and walking trail area that is currently used by many for those purposes in perpetuity. Article thirty-four is a standing warrant article that was first used in FY twenty-three to move the Community Preservation Act funds into their various reserve accounts. And then designate the balance into the general reserve. We anticipate a little over a million dollars in revenue for fiscal year twenty-four for CPA funding. Board members, projects, the following eight articles have been approved and recommended by the Community Preservation Commission, and they will be describing them as needed throughout the hearing process, and if needed at your next meeting, if you need more information from them. So the first project would be to do HVAC improvements at the eighteen thirty Brick Schoolhouse. The second project would be just shy of two thousand dollars for facility assessment review of District Number Five Schoolhouse, which is located at the intersection of Old Mill Road and Main Street. Project three is an eighty-five, eighty-five thousand five hundred dollar assessment for the rehabilitation of the Prospect Park pergola. Article four is for historic preservation, fifty-five hundred dollar assessment for headstones within the Mountain View Cemetery. Project five would be forty thousand dollars for designer services for a design to For a design to make improvements to Arrowood Park Playground. Project number six is seventy thousand dollar initiative for townwide playground assessment, as well as restoration of the playground at the Edgemere Park. Projects that will complement the select board's initiative and funding through American Rescue Plan Act funds for Edgemere Park. Project seven was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the reconstruction of the basketball courts at Dean Park. Project eight is a hundred and forty-two thousand dollar initiative to establish a parking lot at Camp Wannigan. At the trailhead there to help improve accessibility to the trails and parking on site there. Project nine has not been officially voted on by the Community Preservation Commission, but this board is familiar with it as. Took action on at your prior meeting, which would be to seek funding, roughly fifty percent of those dollars required are four hundred and thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars. For the acquisition of two parcels at the intersection of Lake and Grove Street. For open space preservation purposes, which will allow for walking trails and other passive recreation activities to occur on that site. And preserve the land that is part of the former How Sears Family Farm. Which is directly across the street from a little over ninety-five acres of parkland and open space associated with the Lake Street Park. Article forty-four is related to that, which seeks to acquire an access easement over four thirty-nine Lake Street, which is an adjacent residential property. If this easement was granted, approved by town meeting and then granted by our property owner. This would allow wonderful connectivity between the parcels that we acquire through article forty-three. And ten Elliott Circle, I believe it is, or Elliott Street. Where the town has other open space and it would really create a loop among open space lands that are owned by the town in this area. And also provide great connectivity to sidewalks that are in Lake Street and in the Poet's Neighborhood. Of this section of the town. Article forty-five is funding for the public way acceptance of Frye Beck and Cutler, which is currently a private street. It's roughly a one point three million dollar initiative that will be funded through the use of free cash. Ultimately fifty, roughly fifty percent of the funds will be paid back through betterments of property of butters along those two ways. If approved by town meeting. There'd be a street acceptance for two subdivision streets of Cypress Avenue and Glendale Avenue. Those are still works in progress through the engineering process and under legal review at this point. Article forty-eight is a proposal to dedicate funding for emergency medical services study. Board members, as you're well aware, because of paramedic shortages and other demands on the Worcester Emergency Medical Services. Which we currently. Have a partnership with through contractual relationship with through UMass. Their services have not been as strong as they have been in the past. They still meet NFPA standards with a high level of certainty as far as their response times. However, again, their staffing challenges in the general paramedic market. Mean that we're starting to be concerned with the long-term viability of a contract with UMass generally. And also, the second part would be the ability to continue to receive these services for free, which is the current environment. So it's a five-year agreement that we've traditionally had with UMass. This year, they indicated to us that they are only interested in entering into a one-year agreement, which we're currently in right now. We've had ongoing conversations with them about the town doing a study and us being more of a partner. Than solely relying on UMass for these services. We feel that there'd be ways that the town could begin to establish either basic. And or advanced life support ambulances through town staff that would augment their services and. And provide a much-needed gap, which currently exists within the region. This will, of course, provide much faster response times and higher customer services. To residents in need of emergency medical services. So something that we've shot away from in the past because we had such a good deal. But as we see weaknesses in that environment and in that relationship, I think it's really important that we get on top of this. And don't delay another year, because we could be at the mercy of. A private provider or just UMass alone, and it could be more costly than running our own services. So we'd. Look to study that if this project is funded. Article forty-nine? Sorry.
That's okay. I know you can't see me, so I'm just gonna show. So just on that ambulance emergency study. I'm sure that you've had discussions with the fire chief, Fona, around their thoughts about this. I was just wondering if you could share a little bit. I know there has been interest in the past in looking into something like this.
So a couple of thoughts that I have on that. So yes, Chief Vara, Deputy Chief Colby and I have had several conversations about this. Both with concerns with the level of services that we're currently receiving. And the amount of mutual aid that we're receiving from other towns like Northborough and Westborough. Those numbers, those mutual aid numbers are all up and we're putting a strain on our fellow towns in the region and demanding those services for them. Without the ability to reciprocate, which is true mutual aid. They support this. We've seen towns like Northborough and Westborough, Auburn, who have their own services. Been largely unimpacted by paramedic shortages, because normally town environments are much more stable than private. Or nonprofit emergency medical services. So they, with the exception of having to come into communities like Shrewsbury, who don't currently offer their own services. They've been largely unimpacted by this paramedic shortage within the region. So both the chief and deputy chief are interested in studying this and have brought great suggestions about how we may. Walk in instead of, you know, sprinting into this new environment. That would, you know, allow us to gauge our ability to provide these services in a way that wouldn't overextend. Current operations within the fire department.
Great, thank you.
All right, so continuing on, article forty-nine would be an article to consider. If necessary, this is still under legal review, the ability to, we certainly can designate the police chief as the dog hearing officer. We just need to determine the full details of the legal mechanisms that we need to put in place to do that. The thought behind this, board members, is to, one, provide better service and having more prompt hearings. Of course, the select board often, over the past five-plus years, have had to schedule a special meeting. To accommodate a dog hearing. This has often led to delays and the timeliness of being able to provide those hearings. Having a hearing in a very public setting, like would be required through a select board meeting, often puts. Undue challenges on both the dog owner and anyone who may have requested the hearing. And potentially have been harmed or bitten by an animal that would be the subject of the hearing. So we feel that, you know, this administrative move would improve. The expedition of these very critical matters that sometime come before the town. And also not place them, you know, so forwardly in the public light when sensitive matters are heard. Now, of course, they would still be available and open to the public, but it'd just not be a part of a select board's regular routine business. As it could be handled by the chief of police. So article fifty is to adjust.
Mr. Samia, did you have a question?
Yeah, just Mr. Mizikar on forty-nine, I know we're looking at the chief, but a quick review of other communities, some. It's gone from Salem to the chief to Newton to the dog officer to Somerville. Broad designation to police department and Dartmouth, an officer from time to time. Designated by the select board through the chief, so I didn't know if there's any benefit. What I'd ask is, is looking through the. Legal aspects of it, if there's any benefit to some of the other models that these districts use to maybe give more flexibility to the chief.
Sure, we could certainly review that with the chief in detail. The only one that. I'm not a fan of is the animal control officer being the hearing officer, because sometimes that individual needs to bring, cause the hearing to happen, so. But those other models seem to be viable and we can explore the best one for the town.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Let's see, so article fifty would be to adjust the general bylaw associated with the Affordable Housing Trust that currently reads. A town manager or assistant town manager, and I would change that to town manager or designate to provide more flexibility in appointing. The right staff member or person to the Affordable Housing Trust. Article fifty-one is an item that's under consideration by the Conservation Commission to establish a local wetlands protection bylaw. There are many benefits to establishing a local bylaw, and this has been under consideration by the town. For probably ten years or greater. Some of the benefits for this include being able to further regulate boundaries associated with wetlands. And where development can occur. And also allow us to adjust the fee beyond what is provided for in the Massachusetts general laws to ensure that the town can recover. Costs from applicants in the thorough review that we conduct through town staff associated with. Wetlands protections, notices, and permitting. Article. Fifty-two is under consideration. The following four articles are under consideration. The following two articles are under consideration by the planning board. An adjustment to the gasoline sales footnote within the Route Twenty Overlay District. Adjustment and creation of a definition of adult day health facility, which is a growing use within the Commonwealth. For services that are provided for adults during daytime activities. Article fifty-four is an item that has been established in review through staff. Based upon experience that we've had with businesses who are operating in the Route Twenty Overlay District regarding. Expressly allowing for the sale of different types of non-vehicular, excuse me, for the rental of specific types of non-vehicular. Equipment. Many businesses within the Route Twenty Overlay already provide these services. And they are certainly complimentary to the intention of the Route Twenty Overlay District, however, they're not expressly permitted at this time. And we feel this would be an economic driver to allow them to use so. And then the final article would be to permit energy storage within certain zoning districts within the community. There are many features found within the town of Shrewsbury where a national grid and Selco transmission lines intersect. And given technology changes, climate change considerations, and green energy, battery storage. Is a critical component to a greener grid and more reliable grid. And more cost-friendly grid in the future. So we want to position the town of Shrewsbury to be able to take advantage of that through zoning. And provide private property owners the ability to partner with our energy service providers. In stirring energy for resale and other purposes in the marketplace. So those are the fifty-five articles that are currently proposed. Some of them. May not stay on for the final article or final warrant. We, I don't see any others that we're actually considering to add at this point, but there may be some in the next two weeks. There's citizens petition deadline is next Wednesday, excuse me, next Tuesday. A week from today, those will be added in. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have generally at this time.
So Mr. Mizikar, the color groupings are because. If town meeting agrees, if the moderator puts forth the question in town, town meeting agrees, these would be. How these would be supposed to be bundled?
This is my proposal. I've not had any conversations with the moderator at this point. However, I don't know how traditional, because we only have one year of official experience at this, but they're bundled similarly to. To the way they were last year, it was approved by the moderator. So this, yes, in short, yes, but this is just my cut of that.
Okay. Generally, that's what they might be.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else have any questions on this before we move on? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're onto item number eight, to review an act on the final meeting minutes of the Beal. Early Childhood Building Committee from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Mizikar, this is just. Closing out that project, the minutes of the meeting, the final meeting. And closing out the work of the committee.
That's right, this is the final meeting of the committee and in order to close out their minutes. Select board is being asked to approve them in this public session as drafted. And select board member Cassavan is a member of that committee. If there are any questions, she may be able to answer them.
Hope not, because I only went to one meeting, so. This is the one. I'm gonna move that we approve those minutes.
Correct. Did you move that?
I move that we approve the minutes, yes.
Okay, second?
Sorry, I couldn't find my mute button. Second.
All those in favor will signify by saying aye, and this requires a voice vote. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo, aye. Okay. Next item is to review an act on the manager's appointment on the. Appointment to the Commission on Disabilities pursuant to Mash General Lodge, Chapter Forty, Section eight J. Suzanne Amaya, one fifty Spring Street, the fellow vacant term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Pleasure of the board.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, cry as a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo, aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, next order of business is to review an act to appoint two members. To the Zoning Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Okay. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven residents. Apply for their position. For the, for the, you know. For when each of the two positions.
We. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, did we skip number nine?
No, didn't we just do number nine?
No, we just did number nine. Oh, we just did number nine. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong numbers here.
Oh, okay. My skip one. Okay, so, so we had a spreadsheet to. Do our own due diligence, talk to any of the applicants we wanted to, and then to. Vote and. Taylor compile those votes, and I think we all have a copy of. The results that we got a couple of minutes before the meeting. Yes, no?
Yes, I see mine. That's what I'm studying right now.
So we had Patrick Fulan, forty-one Oak Street, Anon Chamar, one oh-two Stony Hill. Road, David Moore, sixty-bag Grab, Kevin Nisbet, eleven Dudik Street. Math Kastner, fifty-three Bailey Road, Megan Vincent, seven ninety-seven Grafton Street. And Timothy Vicero, the fourteen-taff road, who expressed interest. The result of the. The members voting was. Patrick Fulan got two votes. David Moore got two votes. Kevin Nisbet got four votes. Megan Vincent and Tim Fitzgerald got one vote. So it appears Kevin Nisbet obviously received four votes, so Kevin would get one of those seats. And it appears we have a tie for the other seat, which would mean we'd have to discuss that, and we'll have to make a decision tonight on who, which of Mr. Fulan or Mr. Moore. We'll have to have a tiebreaker vote. So which one of those gentlemen will get the vote? So I'll open it up to the board. Somebody wants to make any comments or make a motion on either one of those gentlemen?
I'm happy to start out. So I had voted to reappoint Mr. Fulan in the role, I believe, in you know, the work that he's done. I think that he's done a good job. I also think that stability on a board matters and bringing on one new member at a time sometimes is a way to achieve some stability on a board, especially a board that handles such intricate and complicated details as the Zoning Board of Appeals does. So that is why I voted for Mr. Fulan. However, I will say that I did speak to all six of the candidates, and I found all six of them to be extremely well qualified. It's not an easy decision to appoint someone in a situation where everyone is highly qualified and in it for the right reasons and and wanting to do something to give back to the community. So however these appointments turn out, I would just hope that, you know, that we would offer the associate position to the applicants and also encourage these, these individuals to seek out ways to help out the town in the future if they aren't appointed, but also keep their information on file. I know I will be tucking away some of these names in the back of my mind. But I am going to stay with my original vote of, of Mr. Fulan.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Samia?
I seem to be the swing, maybe the swing vote, looking at this. Sorry, I'm just toggling back. I think that sorry, I'm here. So I did a blend of looking at experience, speaking with some of the members or applicants. I think they're all qualified. I think they offer all unique skill sets. I did vote for Mr. Nisbet and then Mr. Fitzgerald, and as I think all do when they speak to applicants, if they don't get it, I would encourage everyone here to continue their interest in serving for our community, whether this role or a different role. I'm willing to change my vote, given that Mr. Fitzgerald, I'm the swing vote from Mr. Fitzgerald to Mr. Moore. I think that I, after speaking with Mr. Moore and looking at his skill set together with Mr. Nisbet for me, and, and also looking at the overall skills, understanding that that board has changed quite a bit. I thought that that for me would balance the board, given a lot of experience that has left the board with different skill sets, so that I would change my vote from Mr. Fitzgerald to Mr. Moore.
Okay. Thank you. But let's hold that and see if we're going to take a vote or we're gonna just, just leave it at that. Are there any other comments? Questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, this one?
I, I, I mean, I don't want to belabor it. My comments really echo a lot of what Mrs. Cassavan said in terms of performance, commitment, and continuity of the board. So I also stand by my original vote of reappointing Mr. Fulan and appointing Mr. Nisbet, moving him from the associate member to regular member.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I guess anyone else would be, Mrs. Conlon, too, or me?
Um, this was a, you know, a challenging selection for me. I, you know, I found all of the candidates letters and applications to, you know, they are all very qualified for the position, and it's really exciting to see such a qualified pool of candidates for one of our boards. I did really appreciate Mr. Moore's comments in his letter of interest. He seems to be really dedicated. He's a newer member of our community, but seems very interested and dedicated to staying informed and staying involved in the community. I think I'd like to keep my vote with him. This is, it's, I find this to be one of the most challenging decisions that we make when we make appointments to these boards, because we have such qualified candidates. But I think I will keep my vote with Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess I'll add my comments. Definitely. I, I had watched Mr. Nisbet as a, as an associate since he's been on the board. And actually, I'd hoped we had an opportunity in the past to put him on as a full member because I think he's, he's done a really solid job, so I didn't really look beyond him for, for one of the positions. And as I was going through the resumes, I did actually I was intrigued by, by Mr. Mr. Moore's resume and I, I, I thought that he would have the technical background that I personally would be looking for. And I did talk to him at length and I was, I was satisfied, I was wooden satisfied with what I, what I think are his strengths and I honestly didn't, didn't look beyond him because I he had the skill set. And he seemed to have the mindset for a ZBA member that I was looking for. So that's why I voted for him and honestly, I think I think he was he, I think as an, as a, as a newer applicant, I think he was probably the strongest candidate. I, I think he would work well with Mr. Nisbet and the other members of the board, so that's why I voted for him and I think there were other members also who were probably strong candidates reading their resume, but what I was looking at for the board and looking at the history of that board and members who had been on it, I just thought right now that he could, he could make the stronger contribution. And, and that's why I voted for him and I, I will stay with, with that vote, so. I don't know if you, if you want to formalize your votes, or you just want to allow Mr. Samia to change that vote? I'm sorry, Ms. Flynn, do you have a if you want to say something?
I wanted to ask a question, Mr. Mizikar. Do you happen to know how long Mr. Fulan has been a member of the ZBA? It's fine if you want to get back to me.
Yeah, I do not, sorry. Yep, I do not.
I think I do, but I have to look back at an email because I asked that question.
I think he, he filled part of a, of a like, an unexpired term and he served one term as a member, so a little over two years. Is that pretty much right, Miss Cassavan?
I think so. Yeah, I think that's right. He filled a vacant term and then a full term. I definitely don't think it was, it, I think it was like just before COVID. So it's definitely been more than three years.
And was he an associate member before he was moved into that? That vacant spot or was it a new appointment?
He came in new to fill that position, right, Ms. Cassavan?
He came in new to fill the position, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the background.
Uh, Ms. Conlon?
So I have a question. Our, our next thing is to appoint three associate ZBA member seats? And are we allowed to, like, you know, as Mr., it looks, it appears that Mr. Nisbet, whose seat as an associate member is up for appointment. So if he's appointed to the board, that leaves an associate seat open. So are we able to consider applicants for the ZBA as associate members?
What I thought we would do is because we didn't, we didn't know which of the people who applied for the two-year term would be appointed tonight was have a staff just call or contact those individuals that not get appointed, ask them if they would be interested in the one year as, as an associate. And if they did vote on that, on, on the well, on either all three or on that other seat on the twenty-eighth. Some of them might not want to be an associate member. Sometimes that happens. So instead of appointing them and find out they didn't want it, ask them first. So, yeah, that, that's an open, that would be an open seat with Mr. Nisbet being on the two-year seat.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Samia, you want to officially change your vote? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's going to be one or the other. Either you go two, two, one, or then we do a three, two. So I'll change my vote. We're going to get to the same place.
Okay. So is everyone okay with that? Or do you want to take a, a roll call vote now? I just want to allow Mr. Samia to change the vote?
I think we just, Mr. Samia changed his vote, and I think that we just need to clearly state that this now means that David Moore has three votes and Patrick Fulan has two votes.
Okay. Right.
And so I would think that the motion would be to appoint Kevin Nisbet and Patrick Fulan to the vacancies on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right.
So that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. This requires a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
I'm nay.
Uh, Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon? And DiPaolo, aye. Okay. So on to our next order of business is to review an act with point three associate zoning Board of Appeals members for one-year term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Both Mr. Armenti and Mr. Byrne sent in letters of interest and being reappointed to that to one of those positions. We can, we can decide to vote on that tonight, or we can hold those till next week and vote on all three, I mean, next meeting and vote on all three. It's up, it's up to the board. If you want to do it. Ms. Cassavan?
Uh, my preference would be to see who of the list that, that were not appointed this evening are interested in the associate position, and then appoint three associate members next week or next, in two weeks.
Other members? Everybody okay with that?
I agree with that.
Okay. All right, then we'll hold voting on the associates until the twenty-eighth, okay? We agree? Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we'll run the correspondence, correct? So item twelve is an email dated February twenty-seventh from Emma Snowing's Regional Planner for the Department of Housing Community Development regarding the section. This is section three A, MBTA Communities Interim Compliance. D H C D approved Shrewsbury's Action Plan and Shrewsbury achieved the interim achieved interim compliance with MGL forty A, section three A, which was the the zoning initiative of the MBTA communities, and that's like the first step that, the end of, I think the end of this year, there's another, there's another step that we have to, another milestone that we have to achieve, but we, we're set on that for now. Item thirteen is an email dated February twenty-eighth from Stephen Paul, twenty-six Francis Garden Court regarding the B.O. problem. And he has issues with the traffic report. And the retail being proposed at the B.O. project. So noted. Item fourteen is an email dated March first, twenty twenty-three from Nick Repetka, our Highway Division Manager, regarding storm report for February twenty-third. That storm cost us sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So noted. Item fifteen is an email dated March first, twenty twenty-three from Ashley Gaberalt, twenty Brook Street, regarding no left turn on South Street. She had concerns about using Walnut Street for her left-hand turn, instead of using South Street after that was stopped at that location. And the entire situation in the area. I can give her a call and talk to her unless Mr. Mizikar, you want to do it, but I, I think I can, I can call her and contact, just contact her and go over that with her. So I'll do that this week. If she needs more technical information, Mr. Mizikar, I'll hand her off to you, but I think I can do it. Item sixteen is an email dated March first, twenty twenty-three from Danny Cobb, Red Coat Lane, regarding a list of concerns he has regarding what's seven Maple Ave, which is the proposed B.O. reused project. So noted. Item seventeen is an email dated March third from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager, regarding a snow report for February twenty-eighth. That storm cost us fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, and required thirty-one pieces of equipment. So noted. Item eighteen is an email dated March sixth from Gila Slinian, two eighty-one Main Street, regarding an onsite visit at Centec Knot to view the it's calling the Allen Barnes, the Allen Property Barnes. That happened on March tenth. Several people from a couple of the boards, I guess, and commissions, and I think a couple of staff attended that. Knott's Bridge Development apparently is willing to gift the barns to the town. And some of the representatives from, from the Historical Society. We forgot the other, the other board. And staff were there to look over the properties and discuss how that would happen. I think there's questions about how it will be maintained. And I don't know how far that's gone. But the cost involved. Mr. Mizikar, have you been involved in that at all? Those discussions?
I'm sorry, which discussions?
Allen Property Barnes.
Oh, yes, I, I did, I was not able to attend the meeting on Friday, but several staff members attended and were part of the conversations. They are looking to gift the barns to the town along with roughly five acres.
Right.
So. Um, so.
It hasn't gone farther than that yet?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. Well, item nineteen is an email dated March sixth from uh Brandon Foley, Gibson Sotheby's International Realty um regarding a rate, uh, a waiver from the writer of first refusal for the sixty-one A um on a property on, I think it's sixty-one Cherry Street. Um, asking for a waiver of uh the town's right of first refusal. Uh, it's not me, it's not needed because that, that would have happened a long time ago, around two thousand and twelve, right, Mister Mizikar?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Um, item twenty is an email dated March sixth from General, uh Jennifer Mallett, thirty-nine Villan Circle um regarding um one-to-seven Maple, uh Maple Ave, again, the, the BL project. Um, she had expressed project concerns and had questions about energy efficiency and uh, post BL project in general, so noted. Item twenty-one is an email dated um March seventh, twenty twenty-three from Valerie Clemmie, Selco Communications Coordinator. Request for a proclamation for Aberdeen. Um, a copy of that was provided. Um, would okay with having, having staff put that together? Okay. Um, we can do that. Item twenty-two is an email dated March seventh, twenty twenty-three from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager uh for snow report from March fourth. Um, that storm caused sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and required thirty-three pieces of equipment, so noted. Item twenty-three is a letter dated March ninth, twenty twenty-three from Thomas M. Kennedy, Seventeen Gate Road, regarding a resignation from the retirement board. Um, in this letter, um Mister Kennedy said he'll be retiring, uh resigning from that uh position on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which is um a little over a year um before that term expires. So Arborwood um will, I think, have to advertise for that position um to fill the unexpired term that ends on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. It's my understanding you don't have to be a retiree of of the town system to be on that retirement board, so. Um, Taylor, if we could get an ad out for that, people who are interested. Got plenty of time, but um any, no, actually, you can point somebody anytime after May thirty-first if you want. Right, so we send Mister, Mister Kennedy a letter thanking him for his service on there. He was on, I don't know how long he was on, but he was on for a while, wasn't he?
Always ten years, yeah.
Ten years, quite a while. Um, okay, um, we that's the agenda. Um, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, requires a uh roll call vote. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mister Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Mister DiPaolo, aye. This me- meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening and be careful out in the snow. Still snowing. Good evening. Take care, everybody.
Good night.